Thank you to whoever prepared this, that's extremely helpful.
I'm very grateful, my lord, hopefully not too late. My lord, I was going to take you to some of what in our submission are the key documents in this case. Firstly, there are a number of licences in this case, I won't take you to all of them because they're in fairly similar terms. The last letter in respect to licence is in the supplemental bundle at page nineteen. We haven't been able to find the actual licence, we have asked for it, it cannot be found. So what we have is this letter of the twentieth of August. What we can take from this letter is firstly that there's an accommodation being offered, which is room five, seventy-nine, six Margaret Road. It starts on the twenty-third of August two thousand and twenty-one. And then in bold it says, any placement given is done on an emergency basis. Maybe asked to move to more suitable accommodation during this stay. Please don't take furniture into the property as the accommodation provider will have everything you need. You have to pay a licence fee for your temporary accommodation. And then over the page, page twenty, one of the reasons for the duty, this must be at this stage a one-eight-eight duty, will be discharged if, and then we see over the page, the penultimate bullet point, you are evicted from the accommodation with such thing as antisocial behaviour, smoking in the property, having guests and not abiding to the establishment rules. So from that, we can, we can conclude that you're not allowed to smoke in the property and you're not allowed to have guests. And in fact, in a previous accommodation under a similar licence, he was criticised for having guests.
Does guest means at all?
At all.
At all, don't have any, no other couple to you.
As I understand it, again, we've asked for a licence, we haven't got it, no guests.
Well, yes, that doesn't answer my lord's question, but anyway, yeah. You say that means, that means car come through the door.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not, yeah.
So that's the twentieth of August two thousand, bearing in mind that he applied as homeless on the third of November two thousand and twenty. The actual decision, accepting the main housing duty, is not reached until the second of March two thousand and twenty-two. And we see that decision at supplemental bundle pages twenty-three to twenty-five.
Since you're, this is an implicit criticism in what you're saying, I have no feel for how often, are there, are there targets for?
So there used to be, under the, before the latest amendment to the code of guidance, the previous code of guidance suggested a target time limit of thirty-three days.
Yes.
That's been abolished, there's nothing now in the code of guidance which says when you've got to reach a decision by. But a useful rule of thumb is this, that the homelessness relief duty expires after fifty-six days if within that time, a person who is in priority need has not ceased to be homeless and.
So is this period of, what is sixteen months in this case, unusual?
Extraordinarily long. The way that the act works, you apply as homeless. If the local authority is satisfied that you are homeless and eligible immigration status, they come under the relief duty. The relief duty is a duty to take steps to help you find accommodation, but often it is mixed up with the interim one-eight-eight-one duty, which is to provide you with accommodation whilst the local authority makes inquiries. No matter what label you put on it, once fifty-six days have elapsed and the person is still homeless, then the relief duty is meant to come to an end and the main housing duty could apply if in that fifty-six days, the local authority is also determined that a person is not intentionally homeless and is not in priority need.
But of course, the licence we're looking at, well, the pseudo-licence we're looking at here is not the first licence he had.
No.
He has been in various forms of interim accommodation before. I mean, again, this is not relevant to the case, so if it's contentious, we don't need to get into it, but just so we know the story.
Yeah.
Is there any special reason why, is this longer sixteen months?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
It is triaged, no words or anything. Because it could be that he's in, given his own, his status, might not have been regarded as urgent as others.
But Miss Rowlands might be able to help you with that, but they shouldn't be. Once you've made an application as homeless, if you're owed the main housing duty, the way that the act works is that if your homelessness can't be relieved within fifty-six days and you are someone to whom otherwise the main housing duty should be owed, then the relief duty comes to an end at the end of day fifty-six. And ideally, at that stage, the main housing duty would be accepted, so even on the.
Well, more accurately, a decision will have been made, because the decision might be no.
No, so if, if you satisfy the various requirements, eligibility, priority.
Yes, but the relief duty, the relief duty is not, is not, doesn't depend on you satisfying those requirements.
No, so the relief duty, you have to be homeless and you have to be eligible.
Yes, but you don't have to be priority.
You don't have to be priority and you don't have to be intentionally homeless.
Okay. Right, sorry, let's go back to this, so it's an event, you're about to take us to the decision.
This is, this is a one-eight-four decision and this says, you are owed the full.
And the pages.
Pages, page twenty-three to twenty-five of the supplemental bundle. I mean, again, we see that this is standard letter because the first paragraph says, the relief duty has now come to an end as a period of fifty-six days has elapsed. Well, that is correct, but fifty-six days had elapsed quite some time ago. Therefore, the council must make inquiries into your housing application under section one-nine-three. Well, again, I make no, no point, this is a nitpicking, as Miss Rowlands might say. The inquiry duty is under section one-eight-four, not one-nine-three. One-nine-three is where you get to once you've made your inquiries, anyway.
Well, just, just to pause there, it's not nitpicking. It's inevitable, as any administration has got to use standard form letters, but it is really very important that they get them right, so that trouble is taken to get them accurate.
Yes.
Also desirable, though this may be less easy, that the people using them have the confidence to adapt them where they are clearly need that adaptation because of the circumstances.
Yes.
It never gives a good impression.
No.
But it no higher, if someone has just sent a standard letter with apparently without any thought, but I hope that.
Can, can I?
Is taken by those, those, those behind this, Rowland.
Can I be a bit more charitable here? Because what they're saying is the housing application is under section one-nine-three. So there's an application for assistance under one-nine-three.
But the application for assistance would be under, would be under, firstly, there is no such thing as a homeless application in the act. Secondly, in terms of anything that could even equate to an application would be section one-eight-three, which triggers the inquiry making duty in one, one-eight-four. My lord, I, I have no problems being charitable at all, but this paragraph is simply incorrect. But it makes no difference in our appeal because he's not misled.
Your best point.
It's not my best, no. A point and perhaps a rather, well, but my lord, it isn't, the only, the only point that is important is often with homeless people, you are dealing with vulnerable people who are not legally represented at this stage and it's important that they know what is going on and what they're being told and why, you know, why it's taken such a long time to make a decision on this.
That's obviously right, but in fact, these vulnerable people, probably even for the perfectly worded letter, they wouldn't really understand. They then will then go to classically assistance advice bureau or some form of local advice bureau, where you have often very good and experienced people, but they too have, it's got to be, even if it can't be clear for the vulnerable person, it's got to be clear to a lay assistant rather than someone with a sore degree and a housing speciality.
And my lord, it's a, it's a matter of regret that as time has gone on, the number of organisations available to provide advice has significantly reduced, but anyway, that's not what this appeals about. Anyway, the, the good news for Mr Kyle is that they accept that the main housing duty is owed. And then the, under the heading, what does this decision mean for you? It says, we have a duty to provide you with one suitable offer of accommodation. This will be for the next suitable property, which could be through private rented sector or a direct match of social housing. Or alternatively, you could be made an offer of private rented property over the page, page twenty-four. And the duty will end if you accept or reject the offer of accommodation. The council only has a duty to make one search offer anywhere in the city.
So where are you reading from now?
Top of page twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, sorry, not quite, yeah, yeah.
So the, the point there is he's being told, we're going to make you one offer of suitable accommodation. It could be anywhere in the city.
This, this would be fair to say this is a pretty standard form letter that would be in terms of all these sections under the headings would.
This is, yes, I suspect it is.
It's not as if, so they'd all get one offer by and large.
Well, my lord, that may very well be correct.
And it would be for the next suitable property and it could be through various four courses, a private rented or et cetera.
But there could be this.
The duty will end, that, that, the one you've just read out, that, that, this must be in every letter, isn't it?
No, but there, there is one distinction that is sometimes made. Sometime in these letters, you have a paragraph which says, we consider the accommodation you are in to be suitable.
Okay, but where that's not, this, this run of sentences would follow, wouldn't it? Well, yes, but it will always, they always should, under the law as it now is, they always should say the property that you're in, we consider suitable.
Yes.
Because they're purporting to discharge the duty. It's true, now that we know more about what suitable means, you might have to write a little essay about suitable for the time being or something like that.
Yes.
But whether it says or not, it's by definition suitable, isn't it? Otherwise, they couldn't be making the offer.
Well, in this, in this particular, I would submit, looking at this letter, you can't, I don't take from this letter, we are offering you your current accommodation in performance of the one-nine-three duty. What it's saying is, we've got a duty to make you one suitable offer of accommodation and it could be anywhere in the city and it will be the next offer you get. And if you don't accept it, then that, that'll be the end of our duty.
This is, this is all covered by, because at the bottom of twenty-four, there were twenty-five, isn't it?
Well, my lord, I'll, I'll get there, I'll get there in a moment.
That's right, yeah.
I, I submit it doesn't quite cover it, because if we go back to page twenty-four, when will I receive my offer? Well, it's once a property has been secured. So I say that makes it clear that this is not the offer, you're, you are still to receive your offer.
Yes.
What will that, how will that offer be suitable? Well, it must be suitable for your housing needs and we confirm you require a property with one bedroom. So you need a one-bedroom property. That's not what he's in at the moment, he's in a room in a hostel. And then temporary accommodation provided under section one-nine-three whilst you are waiting for your offer. It says, as you've been provided with emergency housing by Commentary City.
Yes, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not nitpicking just to be creepy, but because we have someone from the council here. I mean, this is of the layout, we've got two headings here. Temporary accommodation, how does this affect my current temporary? I don't know, it's just, it's, it's not, no one seemed any real thought to make it as simple, straightforward as possible. Yeah. Do these follow, in terms of charitable, does this follow, is there a standard form in some form of guidance nationally for these? You know, does it vary from council to council?
It varies from council to council.
Is this actually what the letter would look like? I mean, I see this is how it's been put on the file, which is a perfectly sensible way of dealing with it, but when it's actually, if we, if we did have the paper letter, would it look any different?
No, I don't believe it would, I mean, I have, this is the only letter, only version of the letter that I have seen.
Brutalised log, is it, we're looking at? Yes, I mean, I just wonder where, on page twenty-five, where it says plus bull, which is meaningless, but presumably that's meant to be a bullet.
Bullet point.
Although we do actually have proper bullet points. So I just wonder whether, to be fair to them, it would look better when you got the actual letter, but probably not.
I suspect, I suspect this is a, a, a scan in some way.
Yes, yes, okay.
So how does this affect my current temporary accommodation? Because you've been provided emergency housing in section one-eight-eight, your accommodation will now become your accommodation in section one-nine-three. That's as far as the authority go.
So it's your accommodation at?
Yes.
You're sorry? The address should normally be included, but. So if this has been done properly, they would have put in what the address was?
Yes. Will now become, so that is merely, I mean, the layperson getting this would not really understand what is going on, but the lawyers would understand that the one-eight-eight duty has come to an end. There is still a duty to provide accommodation and so for the label attached to it has changed.
The lawyer would surely understand that by the authorities saying it's become your accommodation under section one-nine-three, which has to be suitable accommodation, that they are saying it is suitable accommodation.
Well, my lord, I, I, I would respectfully not agree with that. The lawyer, in my submission, understands that there's a suitable offer of accommodation will be made and pending a suitable accommodation being made, we are now accommodating you under section one-nine-three. It doesn't necessarily, and I say in this case it doesn't, then also say, because often these letters do say it, that we find that the accommodation you're in is suitable, it, it, it doesn't say that.
I slightly wonder whether this matters, I mean, as we saw earlier, if you're providing accommodation under section one-eight-eight, you have to think it's suitable.
Yes.
So in that sense, there was always suitable accommodation in the authority's view. At this stage, seemingly, if they're performing any duty properly, they must think that the present accommodation is suitable. Does that really affect what's in debate in this case? Because what's actually in debate is whether it's reasonable for continued occupation.
Yes.
And there is, I understand that what you're primarily getting from this letter is the fact that it's anticipated, there's reference to this accommodation as emergency housing, temporary accommodation, and it's anticipated that there will be something.
Yes, so my lord, I, I respectfully agree with that. So it's only, it's tangential, it's not direct, but I do submit on this letter that no one has really, no one has really focused their mind on what would be suitable for Mr Kyle at this stage. And what you've got being sent is a pro forma letter, which simply says, we're now accommodating you under section one-nine-three. And where the energies of the authority are based is saying, we're going to find you some suitable accommodation now. And although we haven't seen the licence, it's also right to say that there's no suggestion at this stage he's granted a new licence which is less restrictive, because now he's not just being accommodated under section one-eight-eight, but he's being accommodated under section one-nine-three.
It's inherently very unlikely, isn't it? Because of the nature of the accommodation as such, those rules are there because of the kind of accommodation it is.
That's right, but that again then feeds into the, is it reasonable to continue to occupy? And finally, just a matter of fairness, although this letter says you have a right to review this decision, the, the, the person getting this letter wouldn't understand, in my submission, that there, A, there'd been a finding that his present accommodation was suitable and B, that he had a right to request a review of that, because he would just see this as a positive decision that he is going to be made an offer of suitable accommodation. That's the second of March and a month later, we have the discharge of duty decision following allegations made against him. That's, and that decision is in the core bundle at pages ninety-two to ninety-nine. And, my lord, I don't see very much about this apart from, we see at the top of, at, at page ninety-two, the second paragraph, you will need to leave your temporary accommodation by the twelfth April two thousand and twenty-two. Then at page ninety-six, at the, toward the bottom of page ninety-six, under the heading, whether the accommodation was reasonable to continue to occupy, there is a recounting of the allegations against Mr Kyle. And then halfway down the page, page ninety-seven, says there are no facts in your case suggesting that the accommodation you lost was not reasonable to continue to occupy. There was no suggestion that you or any household member would suffer violence or abuse or that there was any risk of violence or abuse occurring. We are satisfied that the accommodation is affordable. We are not aware of any other factors suggesting that the accommodation may not have been reasonable to continue to occupy in the context of homelessness. And again, I would submit that this is just a standard three paragraphs inserted into the letter. For example, he doesn't have a household, so there's not a question of there being any household member who would suffer violence or abuse. That was never a, a point. It was never said that the accommodation was not affordable, but what the local authority did know were the rules that applied, the type of accommodation that it was, the tenure that he had. And they also knew that they were, they, they told him, we will be making you an offer of suitable accommodation. So those are all matters that could have been and should have been, we say.
And more fundamentally, or it doesn't ultimately matter, but all, I think you were submitting, the all a bit from directly under the heading down to the first hole punch, didn't belong under this heading at all. This is about more, there's reasonable for us to get rid of you, rather than whether it's reasonable for the occupier to get rid of you, not about whether it was reasonable for you to continue to occupy it. Yeah.
That then leads to, that decision leads to review submissions from the Law Centre, supplementary bundle, pages thirty-two onwards. Now, it's right to say, and I make no bemoans about it, that the focus of the review from the Law Centre was to trying to argue that he had a protected licence and that he shouldn't have been evicted without court order being obtained and that he'd acted in ignorance for relevant fact that he couldn't just be asked to leave. Now, he lost on that and that is not a matter that is challenged in this appeal. Nonetheless, even in this letter, under reasonable to continue to occupy, if one looks at, one looks at page. Sorry, it's, it's in the core bundle, not the supplementary bundle, that's my fault. No, no, sorry, thirty-two, my fault, I'm on the wrong page, it starts at page thirty-two. At page thirty-four, we have reason for us to continue to occupy. And under there, the, the allegation is made that the housing network was biased against him. But then if one keeps going down, at page, at the bottom of page thirty-four, under warnings, it says, at the top of page thirty-five, the warnings were provided while he was occupying accommodation under section one-eight-eight-one, rather than subject to nine-three duty. And then the third paragraph, an applicant who's occupying under the interim section one-eight-eight-one duty cannot be considered homeless intentionally from the accommodation owed under this duty.
Where is that, sorry?
That is page thirty-five, the third paragraph.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And then there's a reference to Alam there. And so the, the, the point is made that previous warnings given during the relief period should be ignored because whilst in the section one-eight-eight, our client is still considered homeless and those warnings should be considered to be spent.
But that's not bearing at all, is it, on whether, on the footing that we've now moved to section one-nine-three, is reasonable to continue to occupy?
No.
And I mean, what source of, which is source for the guidance, it's in the wrong place. Now, it's all very well to say, well, you read the whole letter, but hard-pressed officials, trying to understand what you're saying, will follow your headings. They won't go looking for another letter, saying, oh, this is another point that looks that they may be trying to make, but in a completely different context.
Well, my lord, all I can say is that it, it, it has, it has a heading under warnings and it follows reasonable to continue to occupy, but yes, it's, it's in the letter, I, I take that point.
I agree, it's very easy for us to pick up here. Round for both sides.
My lord, these, this letter is then followed by a minded two-letter written by the authority, saying it's mine to uphold its original decision. That's in the supplemental bundle, starting at page fifty-six. And the point to note here at page fifty-nine, and these are the observations made by the reviewing officer. Firstly, at number two, toward the bottom of, at the bottom of page fifty-nine, you had a limited licence when you occupied the temporary accommodation and as such, you are not protected under section three, the Protection from Eviction Act. If I may just pause it just for a moment, in CNN Lewisham, which we looked at very briefly this morning, one of the reasons why the Supreme Court held that section three of the Protection from Eviction Act didn't apply to licences was because it said, well, this accommodation is occupied under section one-eight-eight-one. It's very temporary, it would just be, the scheme would be unworkable if you had to wait for a possession order before you could evict anyone. It's worth noting that even though the one-nine-three duty was accepted by the local authority in this case, they did not find that there was any change to his tenure as a result. He had an unprotected licence under section one-eight-eight and they find that he has an unprotected licence under section one-nine-three. And then at page sixty, at five, they say that the warnings that were given at issue two are not to be disregarded.
Sorry, do you mean sixty?
So page sixty.
Oh, sixty.
At paragraph, well, it's paragraph five.
Yes, I see.
There, there's a reply to this minded two-letter, supplemental bundle sixty-two onwards. Now, again, the Law Centre are still trying to argue that his licence should be considered as a protected licence. But at page sixty-four, under the heading warnings, the final paragraph on that page, perhaps you, we're getting a little bit.
Which page have we gone, sorry?
Page sixty-four.
Yeah.
It says, given the conditions that can apply for interim accommodation, such as no visitors and no smoking rules, which might perhaps be reasonable in interim accommodation under one-eight-eight, but would unlikely to be reasonable when applied to accommodation which is indefinite in duration and is provided as a dwelling, we reiterate that previous warning should be disregarded. And my lord, I take the point that it's under the wrong heading and perhaps it could be better expressed, but the point is still being made there, that it's not reasonable to continue to occupy accommodation under the one-nine-three duty, which is meant to be indefinite in duration, when there are rules such as no visitors and no smoking.
All right, I see the words, but you do have to look at the context. They go on, while under section one eight eight, our client is still considered homeless. Having had the main duty accepted subsequently, he wasn't asked to be entitled to, assume he was entitled to further warnings.
It is about warnings. It is about warnings, but, uh, sometimes in these cases, one is met with the argument that, well, actually, there was nothing in the letter. That could have alerted the authority to, to any point. And here it may not be, uh, it may not be in the right order, but the point is, the point is being made.
I, I mean, on your, the way you primarily put your case, I'm not sure the terms of the ultimate review decision particularly matter. But, uh, if they were to matter, then. Uh, isn't it fair to say, well, the, the review officer might have been expected to deal with the arguments which were advanced and they weren't about what you're now arguing about?
My lord, I would accept that the review officer primarily deals with the arguments that are advanced. But on the facts of this case and given its unusual length and nature, the history is. I would submit fairly unusual how long he's been in one eight eight one accommodation. The point, the fact, point that's been made about these rules is something that a reviewing officer should have taken into account. Because it's an obvious matter when considering, was this accommodation reasonable for continued occupation?
Is there any law about what the role of the review officer is? If he were a typical first instance, he or she were a typical first instance judge. On the whole, their job would be to meet the particular challenge that has met and not to be. Not to, as it were, pick up points from their general knowledge that could have been made even though they weren't.
But inquisitorial.
Inquisitorial, in other words, yes. So, um, is there any suggestion that it's a bit different in this context?
So that, that there is authority, Cramp and Hastings, uh, I think it's two thousand and four, a judgment of Lord Justice Brook. Again, I'm, I'm familiar with that case, painfully familiar, they cite it against me every time I'm in one of these cases.
What does it say?
What it says is firstly, is that the review procedure is inquisitorial. Secondly, having said that, the review officer is not expected to meet arguments that were not put to him.
It gives him one hand, takes away with the other, yeah.
And were not obvious matters that should have been addressed.
I see.
And so my submission in the facts of this case would be, even though they may not have appeared under the right headings. Given as a matter of law, the review officer has to consider reasonable to continue to occupy. Of, it was an obvious matter that had to be addressed. Now, we have in the bundle authority, I didn't take it to, to take your lordships to it this morning. We've put in the authority of O'Connor and Kensington and Chelsea. And the reason we put that in was, under section one nine one of the Housing Act, which governs intentionality. An act is not deliberate if it's made in ignorance for relevant fact in good faith. So there's a two-part test to intentionality.
But that particular point is not being made anymore, is it?
No, but, but the relevance is, in O'Connor, the solicitors acting for Mr. O'Connor. Did not, who are said to be very experienced housing solicitors, did not raise the point that Mr. O'Connor. Had been acting in good faith in ignorance of a relevant fact. And despite that, the Court of Appeal found that it is something that the authority had to address.
So I see, was that, was that by application, way of application of Cramp?
That, that was, um.
Where, where's the passage?
So it is paragraph thirty five at page one four seven.
Yeah, with all rather specific for the particular case, I think we, if Cramp says what, what you say it says, I think it would be useful for us.
Have a copy of it.
To have a copy.
I, on Cramp, my submission is, the fact, the fact of tenure rules, restricted occupation rules. The fact that the authority has found itself that this is not even a protected licence. These are all obvious matters that the authority has to address when concluding that the occupa, the accommodation is reasonable for continued occupation. Within the meaning of alley in Birmingham.
I'm sure it doesn't really matter, but there, there is more recent authority too, isn't there? I hope there's a decision of Mr. Justice Lewis. How the arguments are shaped by, what the review officer has to deal with is shaped by the arguments. I can't remember, that's Alib Kayet or one of the others. Mrs. Romans was nodding, so she. She'll be able to tell us when she gets to her submissions.
Just checking, it's the same one, Lewis and Lisa.
So Cramp, Cramp is the leading authority. The, the Cramp test was modified by Lord Justice Wilson, as he was, in a case called Paretti in the London Borough of Enfield. Where he said, where someone is disabled, you may have to make inquiry. Uh, because of the public sector equality duty, even when it's not particularly raised. That's, so those are, those.
So it's made even more inquisitorial.
It's made even more inquisitorial.
Yes, I see.
And of course, in this case, although on appeal, we haven't had to argue because it's, uh, that, um. Fact of his disability, uh, but it's relevant in this case that he's found to be in priority need, even as a single person. And, and his case would have been that he was a disabled person. So all that, we say, feeds into, is it reasonable to continue to occupy? And it's something that the authority has got enough information there, even if it may not have been put in the best possible way. My lord, I've got an eye on.
Yes, um, we have asked you some questions, but not a lot, so I really think you, you'll need to be winding up.
And then we have the, uh, I'll move on to the review decision, which is, in the core bundle, pages eighty five to ninety one, supplemental bundle sixty eight to seventy four. And the point to be made here, if I may stick to the supplemental bundle unless your lordships are in the core bundle.
Well, I am now in the core bundle, I don't, I don't, wherever you want, where, where do you want to go?
So page.
Just hit.
Yes, so it's seventy one of the supplemental bundle, which, so it's page one, two, three. Page four of the letter are the observations. And firstly, at point two. The argument that he was, he had a protected licence is rejected. And reliance is placed on the licence agreement that he is said to have signed and provided a copy of. Although we haven't seen a copy of this licence. It is relevant that the only licence he had, he would have had, is when he first occupied under section one eight eight subsection one. And so the overthought, you don't, just don't find there's been any change simply by the fact that we now have the one nine three label, rather than the one eight eight label. Then at point four. Uh, the ring officer says, no evidence provided as to why the property was not suitable for you or reasonable to continue to occupy. And again, my submission on that is, well, it may not necessarily be under the correct headings, but there, they had enough information. Uh, to address whether it was reasonable to continue to occupy or not. And what this letter doesn't do, nowhere does it refer to the point that has been made, that he wasn't allowed to have visitors. That he wasn't allowed to smoke in the property.
We have the points.
You have that point. And the other matter this letter doesn't address is a fact that he'd been provided this as emergency accommodation. And had been told he would be made an offer of suitable accommodation.
Just very briefly to take you, I mean, could a prohibition on smoking nearly have anything to do with it?
It, it, my lord, it could do, if you, if I'm living in accommodation, say if I'm a smoker. And I'm living in accommodation where I'm not allowed to smoke, I might be able to put, put up with that in the short term, perhaps for two or three months. Whilst inquiries are made into my application. But once the main housing duty is accepted, which is indefinite, then it would have something to do with it. Because it would involve a significant modification of how I live.
We're all banned from smoking at work. Is it so different to be banned from smoking?
In your home, it is, in my submission, it is different.
I think, I don't obviously have a great deal of experience in this, but I think it's not uncommon nowadays for private landlords. In, in short-held accommodation to have a ban on smoking, isn't it? Or is that unusual?
My lord, I, I have not come across, I've come across a ban on pets, certainly. I haven't come across a ban on smoking.
Anyway, what, what case is needed to turn on that, I think.
No. The only, the, the only point to make about the judgment of Deputy Second Judge Gregory. Is at paragraph thirty four of his judgment, well, two paragraphs, firstly, paragraph thirty three, core bundle, page twenty six. He says, the, the property was not occupied as a dwelling house.
Sorry, you said, just on that last point, may not matter, is there any evidence that your, your client was a smoker, was a smoker?
There is, well, the, the, the fact that the rule said he couldn't smoke, I can't go any further than what's in the, in the documents. And the documents, one of the rules that's complained about is that there were, there was a restriction on smoking.
Yeah, okay, sorry, going, going back to judgment.
Going back to judgment, Deputy Second, uh, Judge Gregory, paragraph twenty three, he says, property was not occupied as a dwelling house. Because of the nature of the accommodation, the terms upon which he occupied it and how he came to be placed there. We submit that those three points are all relevant to why the property is not reasonable to continue to occupy.
Officer, which paragraph you?
Paragraph twenty three.
Twenty three. Yes, I see.
And then paragraph twenty nine, which is, uh, paragraph thirty four at page twenty nine. He says, there's an obvious and necessary distinction between the victim domestic violence. And a recovering drug addict being housed in accommodation. Which is intended to assist him for as long as he needs assistance into the future. In my submission, that's not an accurate characterisation, A of Moran. Which didn't make a special case for refugees, but was an application of a principle. And secondly, this accommodation, which. Was described as emergency accommodation and where he was told that he would be made an offer of suitable accommodation. Well, that's got it, I, I, I realise I've, I've overshot my time by a lot. But you have my skeleton and my supplemental skeleton. I've made submissions as, as I've gone along. I'll, I'll, in essence, we say the council erred in law in finding the appellant to be intentionally homeless. And that, secondly, uh, they failed to provide adequate reasons as to why the accommodation was reasonable to continue to occupy. Um, I don't know if I can assist any further.
Well, I think you certainly have made your submissions as your landlord, if I may say so, made them very well and helpfully. Unless my lords have any questions, um, I don't think we need here anymore. Just one small point of detail before you sit down. Um, clearly the recorder was quite influenced, or deputy judge, generally was. Um, by, um, a earlier decision of Mr. Recorder Kangore. In Russell, now that's in itself not a great authority, it's just a first instance decision. Have you looked at it? Or you, you were both in it?
We were both in it.
Does that deal with these points in any more detail?
No, no, this is, uh, if I may respectfully say so, this is a more comprehensive judgment.
Fine, thank you. Thank you very much indeed. Yes, Mrs. Romans?
Um, my lords, can I start off by saying I know that those behind me are here very much as a learning experience? And so they will have, uh, taken on board the comments that you've made.
Yes, well, I hope they will take them as made in the right spirit. To help them get it better next time.
Decisions in the white-hot cauldron of a court that we sometimes realise, uh, the infelicities and things that have happened. But one thing I do want to come back on is the question of delay, because you will recall that, um. Mr. Carroll approached Coventry November twenty twenty. And memories have faded very quickly about what was happening at that time. It was, of course, in the middle of the pandemic, or in fact, pretty much towards the start of the pandemic. And at that time, there was, um, the everyone in.
The possession, well, there was the possession.
There was the ban on possession proceedings, yes.
And, and local authorities were housing everybody.
Everyone, everyone had to be housed, so, uh, he, he had to be taken up.
It was, wasn't started, but I think it started in March.
Of March, but, um, the everyone in, uh, proceed, provisions had been, uh, enforced at that time. So he would have been accommodated under some heading or other. Uh, and so there was no, um, urgency in taking a decision on, on his case. But also, it didn't mean that it was more difficult to make inquiries. Um, he approached.
That's a better reason, the first reason. Fact, the fact that he's been accommodated somehow isn't a reason for not going on with the main decision.
The thing is, local authorities at that stage were run ragged.
Now, that's a much better reason.
Absolutely, trying their best to accommodate everyone under the everyone in provisions.
Don't worry, I don't think there'll be any criticism in the judgment about this.
I just wanted to clear that bit out of the way. Couple of other points I do want to clear out of the way as well. Um, the role of the reviewing officer, the Lewisson case, rather, uh, district council of Freeman Roach.
Rather, rather district council.
You will find it cited in my skeleton argument for the case below. So that starts at page sixty seven in the bundle. And I always cite in every skeleton argument, the two cases of Holmes Morehouse and Richmond upon Thames.
Very helpful, sorry, it's page sixty seven.
Find this at seventy one in the core bundle.
Core, core bundle, we got your sentence below in the core bundle, right?
So Mr. Naby said, uh, I would describe him as nitpicking. Nitpicking is the word, uh, that we get from, uh, Holmes Morehouse, uh, from Lord Newburger.
Sorry, we're going, you're going too fast, which page?
Seventy one.
Seventy one, thank you.
Um, uh, the first paragraph I cite from Lord Newburger, a paragraph twenty of that skeleton argument. The court should not take too technical a view of the language used or search for inconsistencies or adopt a nitpicking approach. A benevolent approach should be adopted. Um, however, the, the Lewisson one, uh, uh, is below that at, uh, paragraph twenty one in my skeleton argument. Uh, the court should avoid exegetical sophistication. Um, and the, the last paragraph of my quotation there is the key one in my submission. It is not for the reviewing officer to demonstrate positively that he has correctly understood the law. It is for the applicant to show that he has not, the reviewing officer is not writing an examination paper in housing law. Nor is he required to expound on the finer points of a decision of this.
Well, these are perfectly good points and one sees them, if you come from employment law background, I.
Indeed.
Regularly used to say these things about employment tribunals, but, um. This isn't quite the point that we were exploring, the point we were exploring is. What is the duty of the reviewing officer? Is it only to deal with the points made or is it inquisitorial? And that is, these, these points, they're useful to have, don't go to that question. And, but we were told that, um, that's been dealt with in Cramp and Hastings, do you agree? Do you, do you know Cramp and Hastings?
I do know Cramp and Hastings.
Has Mr. Naby got it right?
And, and that is one I, uh, constantly cite as well. The court should be slow to interfere with a decision of the local authority on a basis that was not raised at the review stage. So in, when it comes to, um, uh, challenging a decision of the local authority. First stage is the review stage and at that stage, the applicant has got the, um.
Is it you talking or is this what you're saying Cramp said?
This is, uh, what Cramp says.
Yes, okay.
And I'm sure there is another decision of Lord Justice Lewis and I've come, I think it's one beginning with A. I could, I think I can think of two beginning with A, there's, is there Abdi Kadir and there's.
Alan Kibbiety or something, yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember which one.
Mr Naby thinks it's Abdi Kibbiati. Is it?
Well, I, I.
You're correcting the name.
Ali Kibbiati might be it, but I can't.
Well, it doesn't matter. I think the sensible thing is, um, we've got the general thrust of it from what Mr Naby told us, unless you're going to say, no, no, he's misrepresented it. Um, let's just leave it and, uh, we'll be sent a copy later. And if anyone can identify Lord Justice Lewison's decision, it would be useful as well for completeness.
Um, my position is that, um, a reviewing officer doesn't have to reinvent the wheel when carrying out a review of the earlier decision. Um, the initial decision has to decide whether the applicant is homeless, priority need, eligible for assistance, potentially homeless. All of those four elements may be subject to review, but if the applicant hasn't challenged one, two and three, and is only challenging intentionality, the decision on review doesn't need to mention one, two and three. Um, it, it's fairly obviously a pragmatic way of dealing with things.
Well, but if, if, if Cramp and Hastings has been properly represented to us, it does go a bit further than that. It, it says that if there are really obvious points which haven't been taken, then the reviewing officer ought to take them.
Um, the only one that's been identified is the section one nine one two point, which you've been taken to in no honour.
All right, we're just wondering what the law is at the moment.
That, that is, that is the only one.
I'm sorry, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, as we can read Cramp and Hastings for ourselves. But you, you were saying that effectively a reviewing officer doesn't have to deal with a point not taken. But what Mr Naby was saying is the law is that in certain circumstances, the reviewing officer may have to deal with a point not taken if it's an obvious point.
Uh, yes, but it has to be very strikingly obvious.
Okay, well, that's fine.
In the, in the case of, uh, Pieretti, um, which is the one in relation to disability, um, it was one where effectively the behaviour of the people concerned was so markedly erratic that it raised the question of, it was caused by their disability.
It's obvious, it's not obvious, is it? If it's strikingly obvious, is there authority for that proposition? And what's the difference between obvious and strikingly obvious?
I could also cite a Wardenham Birmingham City Council, F and Birmingham City Council.
Well, look, can we, can, uh, we haven't got any of these cases here, and I think your, Mr Naby telling us what they say, and you're saying, you're putting a different spin on it, isn't very helpful. Can we have, and it could, could conceivably be relevant in this case because here, the case being presented by Mr Naby is quite a lot different from the one that was presented by the, um, uh, Law Centre. There's no criticism anyone, but that is the fact. So we do just need to direct ourselves correctly as to how relevant that is. Now, neither of you have come prepared with submissions on this point, again, I'm not being critical, but rather than do it on the hoof, let's have the authorities. Um, perhaps we will allow you to make one-page submissions, just drawing attention to the passages which you say is of the right test, and then we can direct ourselves correctly. We don't want to have a major essay-writing competition on it.
Thank you, I, I will do that.
Okay, the two of you can do that. Decide, if possible, agree what the authorities are. Um, and hopefully it's only one or two, and then one-page note from each of you. And then let's move on to the facts of this case.
What's the bottom line in this case, though? What do you say this, the position is here? Applying the principles, what do you tell us about?
Um, the clear position here in my submission is that the, uh, appellant was intentionally homeless. There's no dispute.
I think, I think.
I meant on the, on the.
On the obviousness.
The obvious will strike at the obvious point.
It, it's, it's, it, it wasn't an obvious thing that the, the reviewing officer should have considered because, uh, it was contrary, in fact, to what the, uh, applicant was submitting. And because it's, because Mr Naby's case is wrong in law.
Perhaps I, maybe I didn't pick up your skeleton, read your skeleton properly. I didn't detect your skeleton saying, this is all very interesting, but none of it is open to Mr Naby on appeal.
Um.
If there are paragraphs that says that.
Uh, no, but his position on, I, I, I think I've made the point that this is very much his secondary position as he was.
All right, that, but that's just a debating point. Um, what, what one? What we'd like to know is, are you saying that these points can't be taken? I don't think you are saying that.
When I'm asked whether it's an obvious point, it's not an obvious point. If it had been an obvious point, it would have been Mr Naby's first point on his appeal, instead of being his secondary point.
Just to be clear, Mr Naby essentially runs the two points. Firstly, he says, well, as a matter of law, uh, this can't be treated as, um, accommodation that is reasonable to continue to occupy. And secondly, he has a reasons point.
Yeah.
Would I be right in thinking that this debate would bear on the reasons point rather than really the first point, which is a point of law, and it doesn't matter what the review officer said?
Well, I think so, yes. Um, because, well, I do say that the reviewing officer is directed towards a very different point by the submissions that are made. Um, but I do say that the reviewing officer has also not overlooked, uh, an obvious point that she should have taken into consideration. Um, because of the nature of the accommodation being very different from the nature of the accommodation that my learned friend has referred you to.
Well, let's move on then to, to substance, yeah.
I wanted to start off by talking about, um, uh, vocabulary. Um, this is about discharge of duty. Discharge of duty in homelessness cases, uh, has two meanings. One is, it means the way the local authority performs their duty. And the second is, it talks about the way a local authority informs an applicant that their duty has been brought to an end. So we're talking about a discharge of duty decision, uh, D D as it appears in some of the documentation, uh, arising out of the way that the local authorities perform their duty. So I'm going to try and make sure that I use, uh, perform rather than discharge when I talk about the way the local authority performs their duty. And, um, the key provision is section one hundred and ninety-three six B, which provides that the local housing authority should cease to be subject to the duty under that section, that is to say, the main housing duty. If the applicant becomes homeless intentionally, forms the accommodation made available for his occupation. Your lordship's made the point earlier that accommodation in this act, it's instructive to look at the way it's dealt with in other cases. It doesn't say suitable accommodation. It doesn't say accommodation which it would have been reasonable for him to continue to occupy. It's the accommodation made available for his occupation by the local authority in performance of their duty under section one hundred and ninety-three, section one hundred and eighty-eight, any duty that they owe to the applicant. Again, on vocabulary, we talk about temporary accommodation, interim accommodation, short-term accommodation. That can be granted in basically four circumstances. The first one is when the applicant first arrives, uh, uh, and the section one hundred and eighty-eight duty in sets. That is to say, the duty to provide accommodation pending a decision. It may be very easy to take a decision. It may take inquiries, so that period of time may be moments, or it may be a longer period. And if the decision is adverse to the applicant and they seek a review of that decision, there is a discretion, not a duty, to provide accommodation pending review. And if the, uh, outcome of the review is still adverse and the applicant appeals to the county court, there is a power, not a duty, to provide accommodation pending appeal. So those short-term periods of accommodation may be provided by the local authority. However, it is also possible to perform the main housing duty by the provision of short-term accommodation. That is clear, first of all, from Arua, then from, um, Ali, um, AKA our ways. Um, and is not in dispute, uh, in this case. So when we look at section one nine three six B, the local housing authority ceases to be subject to the duty under this section if the applicant becomes homeless intentionally, form accommodation, which may be short-term accommodation, made available for his occupation by the local authority. Nothing in the terms of that section require it to be accommodation that it would be reasonable for him to continue to occupy for any particular period of time. And nothing in that section is limited to accommodation that's provided otherwise than on an emergency basis. My learned friend has made, placed great emphasis on the fact the, uh, letters in offering, um, the applicant, uh, accommodation in this case refer to it being provided on an emergency basis. But there is no reason in statute or indeed in practical terms by the fact that he was provided with it because of an emergency of, very often of his own creation in this case, should give him some kind of immunity when he behaves in the way that he behaved in this case. We have two concepts. Reasonable to continue to occupy and suitable accommodation. There's a great overlap between the two of them. What is reasonable to continue to occupy and what is suitable are going to be very much the same in most cases because it's all about space and arrangement, affordability, location. Um, I think the way I put it is the difference is it's whether you're coming or going. Um, it's reasonable to continue to occupy the accommodation that you're already in, but it's going to be suitable accommodation when the local authority puts you in it. But the same actual physical bricks and mortar can be both. And we see that from the Birmingham and Ali case. What happened in that case was that Birmingham had accepted a duty to each applicant as homeless, but left them where they were. We called that homeless at home. They had accommodation that was not happy accommodation for them because it was in a poor condition or it was overcrowded. Um, and in one case, they had a disabled daughter who needed specif- uh, better accommodation, which is very, very difficult to organise. Birmingham ended up having to buy an office block and converting it, in fact. And so they were able to say that these applicants were homeless and yet not provide them with alternative accommodation because the same bricks and mortar might be not reasonable for them to continue to occupy, but could be suitable accommodation for the local authority to secure for them in performance of, uh, their duty to them because they could accept it for a shorter period of time than they would if the local authority didn't intervene. Um, so it was simultaneously, they were homeless but being provided with accommodation in pursuit of the homelessness duty. And that word, if the local authority didn't intervene, um, your lordship's asked what, what that meant in the context of Ali. And, um, I acted for Birmingham in that one. I've looked through the submissions that we made and I can't see where it actually came from. I think it was just Lady Hale's, uh, own formulation. My submission is that what that means is accept a homeless duty to the applicant and perform it, discharge it if you like, uh, so that they have got somewhere else to go either immediately or in the longer term. Because of course what Ali was all about was trying to compel Birmingham to arrange other permanent accommodation for them. And I've listened to Mr Naby's submission that, um, until Ali, we all understood that the law was, was different. Um, the person who understood it best was my learned leader, Mr Underwood QC in that case. Um, and he explained to me what was going on there and explained, uh, to, to the House of Lords as well, of course. It's a more generous interpretation of what homelessness means. If you apply the one more night test, a homeless applicant comes to the front desk and says, um, I've got this really terrible accommodation. Please find me somewhere else. And the local authority says, well, can you put up with it for tonight? And he says, yeah, goes back. He's not homeless. Um, comes again the next day. Can you put up with it for tonight? Yeah, okay. Comes back the next day and the next day and the next day. Whereas if we adopt the, the Birmingham interpretation, Birmingham were able to say, can you go back there tonight? Yes. Okay, well, that's suitable for you as interim accommodation, but we will accept that you are nonetheless homeless. Manchester and Moran was argued after Birmingham and Ali. And, um, Birmingham were in, uh, able to make further submissions to the House of Lords to take account of what was being argued there. And Mr Luber, QC as he then was, had argued, um, both cases, but in a rather different way. Um, and he argued that, um, a homeless woman who flees domestic violence and is placed in a refuge should be treated as having no accommodation, uh, or that it was, um, not to be treated as accommodation. Um, and Birmingham proposed the, um, symmetry of the two cases. Provides a, a solution to both cases. So when you say that it's reasonable to continue to occupy accommodation and suitable, being symmetrical concepts, both being assessed at the time the person is expected to occupy that accommodation. So reasonable for you to continue to occupy here and now at the time the decision falls to be made, is it suitable for you here and now at this time? Those concepts should be treated in the same way going forwards. And so what you've got in relation to a woman going to a refuge and yet still being homeless is because she's, she's fleeing accommodation where she's sort of exposed to violence, so she's homeless for that accommodation. And the fact that she's found a roof over her head for some nights is not accommodation she's reasonably to be expected to continue to occupy, uh, and doesn't disqualify her from getting the homelessness assistance. So she's effectively, like the applicants in Birmingham, homeless at home. What our ways, sorry, Ali, does not decide in my submission is that no domestic violence refuge can be treated as being uh, accommodation which is reasonable to continue to occupy. Clearly, refuges come in all shapes and sizes and perform a number of different uh, services for people fleeing domestic violence. There are refuges where you are granted a twelve-month, a short shorthold tenancy of self-contained accommodation. There are other refuges where you're just put up in a room for a night or two. There are ones where you're provided with medical, education, all kinds of support, including the kind of support that you might need, uh, to avoid, um, getting into, uh, the kind of trouble that Mrs Moran did, uh, in, in the Manchester case. Um, but it does not, in my submission, amount to a one-size-fits-all decision in relation to, um, uh, refuges generally speaking. Uh, and in particular at, um, paragraph fifty-two, I think it is. Bear with me. Paragraph sixty-five makes the point most clearly, and the last sentence of that. Um, the important principle established here is that in most cases, a woman who has left her home because of domestic or other violence within, it remains homeless, even if she's found a temporary haven in a women's refuge.
Does Baroness Hale, and that's, that's, that's a summary of what she's, they've decided, does she, does that refer back to any earlier passages in the judgment?
Well, at the beginning of, uh, paragraph sixty-five, she does make the point that there may be circumstances in which it's reasonable to continue to occupy a place in a refuge indefinitely. Um, and.
That's all we need, isn't it? She doesn't elaborate on what circumstances. You're just going on to say it wasn't the case in this case?
Yes. When you look at paragraph 43 on page 61. The point I would make here is we're looking at immediate place of protection, not a place to live. Some refuges do provide a place to live on a more permanent basis. So down at the bottom of that paragraph, you're looking at the the questions that a person fleeing domestic violence is going to be asking themselves in the immediate aftermath of fleeing domestic violence. Is she ready to accept that he will never change, make the break and start a new life in a new home? The paragraph 52 is, I think, the key to my learned friend's submissions. Fifty-two on page 63. Once it is decided that it would not be reasonable for a particular woman in a refuge to continue to occupy her place there indefinitely, it becomes unnecessary to decipher the refuge's accommodation. Women will be homeless while they are in the refuge and remain homeless when they leave. Women who loses their place there even because of something she does that would normally amount to intentional homelessness does not become homeless intentionally because it would not be reasonable for her to continue to occupy the refuge indefinitely. So the first sentence is key. Once it is decided it would not be reasonable for this particular woman in this particular refuge to continue to occupy that place indefinitely.
As so framed, it does sound like you look at whether it's reasonable for her to make that choice. Not so much whether the landlord is making that choice available.
It's an objective test for the local authority to decide. In my submission, does the local authority consider that it would have been reasonable for her to continue to occupy that property at the moment that she left it?
And what does the local authority, how does the local authority approach that question? Does it ask itself whether the landlord is willing to allow her to remain indefinitely or whether she can put up with staying there indefinitely?
Both of those would be relevant depending on the facts of each particular case. It's whether this particular person in these particular circumstances, whether it would be reasonable for them to continue to occupy this particular accommodation. And it's a sort of subjective-objective test. It's an objective decision for the local authority to make in light of the characteristics of the person and the accommodation.
I mean, although it's clear from the subsequent case law that this applies to cases where you have acted in such a way that you're evicted, the flavour one gets from the basic language of 1911 is the question of reasonable to continue to occupy is that it's aimed at a person who says, I'm leaving, I can't stand this place anymore. And in those circumstances, it's clearly important to decide, well, should he have? Was there something that made it unreasonable? So the natural reading of 1911 is that it's directed at yes, the people who leave voluntarily and therefore at what they were having to put up with there, rather than whether it was reasonable for the landlord to continue to have them.
Well, of course, intentional homelessness covers a wide range of issues. Non-payment of rent, antisocial behaviour leading to eviction, not just leaving voluntarily. And the question is always, is it reasonable for you to continue to occupy, not was it reasonable for you to leave? And so
If you're basically concerned with the state of the accommodation, isn't it? That's the natural reading of it.
Yes, very much so, but not exclusively so. Is it reasonable for them to continue to occupy accommodation which is unaffordable, for example?
Well, sorry, I was using the state of the accommodation in the widest sense, the characteristics of the accommodation.
The key difference between Moran's case and this case is that the accommodation that Mrs. Moran was in, the refuge, was not accommodation that had been made available for her by the local authority, but it was accommodation that was disregarded when the local authority was asking whether she was homeless.
Why is that? It's just, there's obvious difference on the facts. Why is that a key difference legally? Why does it make a difference legally which it is?
1936B becomes homeless intentionally from the accommodation made available for his occupation. It's the performance of the duty by the local authority. The local authority was performing its duty to Mrs. Moran by accepting that she was homeless and then arranging alternative accommodation for her as a result of that application. In this case, Coventry were performing their duty towards Mr. Kyle by arranging accommodation for him, which was suitable accommodation. And that was suitable accommodation for him for his particular characteristics. That is to say, in this case, he needed support with his drug addiction, which he was getting there and which was suitable for the period of time for which he was likely to occupy it. My lords have raised the question over the course of Mr. Nabi's submissions about whether it was suitable accommodation. Actar Birmingham City Council is authority for the proposition that the local authority doesn't have to expressly state that it's suitable accommodation. Twenty eleven EWCA Civ 383. There's no statutory obligation to give reasons in an offer letter for considering that it's suitable accommodation. It is implicit in any offer of accommodation that the local housing authority considers the property to be suitable in all material respects, including location, size, configuration. The onus is on an applicant who believes that the local housing authority has made an error in offering her accommodation which she believes to be unsuitable to base the issue with the council. And the warnings contained in the offer letter of the consequences of refusal and the fact that an applicant can protect her position by accepting an offer while still challenging its suitability for her means that there's no unfairness to an applicant in this situation.
And I do wonder, as I suggested a moment ago, whether really suitability is a bit of a red herring. We're not merely concerned with suitability, we're concerned with reasonableness of
The reason why suitability is still part of the question here is because of the symmetry between the two aspects of what is right to offer, if you like, or what is right to expect an applicant to occupy. The starting point for that consideration is the case of Al Wua, which was behind the thinking of Birmingham's case in Aley.
Tab three?
It is, starts at page 28.
Sorry, I interrupted you. What is it behind the thinking of?
The Birmingham's case in Aley.
You mean the unsuccessful case in Aley?
No, the winning case.
Oh, is he? Okay, it's behind the case, not the decision, though. Never mind. Let's go.
You see the facts in the judgment of Lord Hoffman, starting at page 38. The appellant, Mr. Wua, applied as homeless and Brent accepted the duty to her under the previous provisions. She was given accommodation in a short-lived house elected to the council by a private landlord, you see at letter F. And the council's intention was that she should stay there until they could offer her more permanent accommodation. They then arranged an offer of more permanent accommodation, a Peabody property, and she refused that offer. And if it is accepted, you see down at letter H that the council duty was therefore discharged. And the result was that she was given notice to quit her short-lived accommodation. She then applied to Brent. The council conducted its own investigation under section 62, determining that she was homeless and in priority need, but intentionally homeless because of eviction from flat B. Her results were a decision not to accept the offer of permanent accommodation by in fact, it wasn't Brent that offered that, I've got that confused. Tower Hamlets was making her the previous offer of accommodation. Over the page, at page 67. So if we start at, sorry, I'm using the internal numbering rather than numbering in the bundle. Perhaps if we start at the bottom of page 39, using the bundle numbering now. And we note that until 1986, the Housing Act 1985, under which the previous provisions arose, contained no definition of accommodation. That led to the decision of the House of Lords in Pohlhofer. And that was the one that decided that accommodation didn't have to be appropriate or have any other quality, except for being fairly described as accommodation. As an example of shelter which would have failed the test of what actually amounts to accommodation, they cited Diogenes's tub and the modern equivalent would be the night shelter in Ex-Party Boers in which the applicant could have a bed if one was available, but had to walk the streets of lower stock by day. Further down that page, between letters D and E, we see that the consequence of the decision in Ex-Party Pohlhofer was that a person accommodated in conditions so intolerable that it would not be reasonable for him to continue to occupy that accommodation was not homeless, although if he actually left, he would not therefore become intentionally homeless. And that provided the inconvenient result that they had a kind of a perverse incentive to be street homeless before they could activate the local authority's duty to provide them with accommodation. We then had the 1986 amendments to the Act to include the definition of accommodation as accommodation which it would be reasonable for them to continue to occupy. It follows at the bottom of the page that a local authority is entitled to regard a person as having accommodation and therefore not being homeless. If he has accommodation which, having regarded the matters mentioned in subsection 2B, it can reasonably consider it would be reasonable for him to continue to occupy. This produced a symmetry between the key concept of homelessness in section 58 and intentional homelessness in section 61. If the accommodation is so bad that leaving for that reason would not make one intentionally homeless, then one is in law already homeless. But there's nothing in the Act to say a local authority cannot take the view that a person can reasonably be expected to continue to occupy accommodation which is temporary. If notwithstanding that the accommodation is physically suitable, the occupier's tenure is so precarious that he's likely to have to leave within 28 days. As Mr. Nabi has pointed out, now 56 days under the new provisions, then he will be threatened with homelessness within section 58.4. But I find it hard to imagine circumstances.
You're reading us a lot of this, which is fine, although we had read it before, but what point are you making?
I wanted then to go over the page to page 42 between D and E and then
Sorry, just before you do that last sentence there, but I find it hard to imagine circumstances. A person who is not threatened with homelessness cannot reasonably be expected to continue to occupy his accommodation simply because it is temporary. Now, if that's still the law, that's very helpful to you. But can that live with the subsequent decision in Aley?
Very much so. And it's not contended otherwise in this case because temporary accommodation is the way of performing the duty. Mr. Nabi expressly accepted that in his opening submissions. Another example of that is the case of Gilby, which you have at tab eight. In paragraph 15 of Gilby, which is at page 160 in the bundle. The court is discussing here the concept of settled accommodation. However, what we're looking at in this case is the expectation of continuance for the foreseeable future or a significant period of time. So there's no reason for asking whether or not the applicant has this on a licence or a tenancy or what other basis. The test is whether there's a solid ground for a reasonable expectation of continuance for the foreseeable future. And of course, that's what we had in this case. Had Mr. Kyle not blotted his copybook in the way that he did, he could have carried on occupying the accommodation however little legal right he would have had to enforce his right to live there. The question was, as a practical matter, he would have been expected to carry on living there had he not again breached the conditions of living there. Incidentally, the terms of the licence, we haven't seen, but no smoking in an HMO is not a matter of the terms of the licence, it's a matter of the Health Act 2006, section 2, the no-smoking legislation.
Well, you'd better send us that as well. What does it say?
It says you can't smoke in the communal areas, but you can smoke in your private bedroom within an HMO.
Well, then, with respect, it's not nothing to do with this, because he's not allowed to smoke in his bedroom.
Smoking wasn't really the issue in this case.
All right, but sorry, you were making a point about smoking and you were citing the statutes. Then when you summarised what the statute said, it doesn't seem to support your point. It's fine.
I haven't seen anything in any of the documents to say that he couldn't smoke in, to say that he couldn't smoke in his bedroom for any other reason or that he had any problem with that. This was accommodation that like the accommodation in the Birmingham case, Mr. Kyle could live with for the period for which he was expected to live there. It was, had any of the applicants in the Birmingham cases burned down their house while they were waiting for permanent accommodation, they would have been intentionally homeless from that accommodation. It would have been accommodation that was made available to them by Birmingham, even though it was Birmingham leaving them hut rather than moving them to anything new. But it is still accommodation which was made available to them.
Sorry, can I understand that submission? It's central to that submission, is it, that the accommodation was made available by Birmingham?
Yes. In each case, Birmingham had made a decision that they were homeless, but that they could be left where they are. So because Birmingham owed them the main housing duty, they were under a duty to secure that accommodation was available to them, suitable accommodation. So Birmingham was securing it by leaving them where they were.
I'm not sure I follow, I mean, why would they, why would not one of those individuals have been at the same place as Mrs. Moran?
Mrs. Moran was in the condition before she had approached Birmingham, sorry, Manchester it was in her case. Manchester had not made that accommodation available to her.
So just take it forward. The Supreme Court says, in relation to the Birmingham individuals, it's not reasonable for them to continue. Is that right?
For the long-term period until for as long as they would need to be there unless the local authority stepped in. for as long as they would need to be there unless the local authority stepped in.
So they were still homeless?
They were homeless on that basis and owed the homelessness duty by Birmingham.
And if we compare with Mrs. Moran, well, we know that the fact that she was homeless meant that she couldn't make herself intentionally homeless. So looking back at the Birmingham individuals, they were equally homeless. So if they burnt down their accommodation, why couldn't they say, well, we can't be intentionally homeless?
They couldn't say that. They couldn't say that because they, they'd done something as a result of which they ceased to occupy accommodation, which would have otherwise been available for their occupation and which would have been reasonable for them to continue to occupy for the period for which they were intended to occupy it. So the period for which they intended to occupy it, on the long term, it wasn't reasonable. And in the short term, it was reasonable. So it could simultaneously be reasonable and unreasonable, depending on the temporal aspect of it.
In Ali that says that. Ali says it could simultaneously be suitable and not reasonable for them to continue to occupy. But I don't hear anything in Ali that says that it can be both reasonable and unreasonable at the same time for them to continue to occupy it, it's a single concept, you'll see one or the other.
No, it depends on the time for which you are expected to continue to occupy it and.
If you go back to paragraph forty-two of Ali, which I think is the point which appeals with this. And I think this is, I may be probably wrong. Because Mr. Naby starts paragraph forty-two, I think he says his thing. All in the category of cases that are inspired by Lady Hale, paragraph fifty-two. She had, and it follows on from what old Hovman said. She says, at C, page sixty-one. There will be cases where an applicant occupies accommodation which, A, it would not be reasonable for him to occupy on a relatively long-term basis. But it would not be unreasonable to expect him to continue to occupy for a short-term period. Including last line, while the authority looks for accommodation to satisfy their continuing section one nine three duty. So Mr. Naby says, well, Mr. Kyle falls into that category. Why do you say that?
Well, the accommodation that he had was provided to him to occupy for the period whilst Coventry were looking for a longer-term accommodation. So it was reasonable for him to continue to occupy it for that period. It was, and it would not be unreasonable to expect him to continue to occupy it for that period whilst they looked for accommodation to satisfy.
He falls under B.
Reasonable to continue to occupy on that basis.
But why does he not also fall under A?
I mean, A is talking about a different scenario, because it would not be reasonable to continue and occupy on a long-term basis if the authority didn't accept him as homeless. We're talking about a case where he has been accepted as homeless and this accommodation has been provided to him in performance of the local authority's duties.
The authority has accepted his home.
So he accepted him as homeless.
Has accepted his homeless, except he's not, that they owe him the main housing duty.
Yes. And in performance of that duty, they arrange for him immediate accommodation. Then they arrange further accommodation once he gets evicted from that one and that one. So we're onto the third set, I think it is now. And then we accept the full housing duty at that point. And say we will now be expecting you to remain at this property until we find somewhere alternative for you. We consider that this accommodation is both suitable and reasonable to continue to occupy. And because it is accommodation that meets your individual needs and because it is accommodation where you are already living, in fact, it is accommodation which is reasonable for you to continue to occupy. The difference, again, in quality between the Moran case and this is the period of time for which Mr. Kyle was going to be expected to occupy this. We are talking about accommodation that was provided to him to live in, not to take a refuge in. He was living there under the terms of a licence, he was living there, he had his own. I think we've got a description of it in the judgment of the Deputy Circuit Judge. He says, at paragraph five on page twenty-one of the core bundle. Property is a multi-occupation house that provides accommodation for a number of people where the occupants each have their own bedroom but share some facilities such as the kitchen. It's intended to provide accommodation for people such as Mr. Kyle, who recovering drug addicts. And it's a place where they can be offered support and advice on a as-needs basis. It seems clear in those circumstances that how long anyone will spend in that particular type of accommodation is very unpredictable. It may be relatively short, it may be relatively long in terms of many months. And indeed, it was Mr. Naby's submission at the, as the main thrust of his appeal, see that at paragraph twenty-one on page twenty-six, that this was accommodation which could well involve Mr. Kyle living in it for a significant period of time and should be regarded as being provided by way of a dwelling house and therefore be subject to the Protection from Eviction Act and should have been treated as a protected licence. So it was common ground that this was accommodation that Mr. Kyle would be living in as a a longer-term prospect than the immediate refuge situation contemplated in Moran.
So you say that, sorry to drag you back, are you saying therefore, if you go back to paragraph forty-two of Ali, that this case does not fall within A at letter C? In other words, this is not a case where it would not be reasonable for him to continue to occupy on a relatively long-term basis? May or may not?
May or may not, we haven't considered that in fact. And I don't take a position on whether, relatively long-term is, well, how long is a piece of string? If he was, for example, benefiting from the support given to him in this accommodation and he could have stayed there for another six months, is that a relatively long-term basis? Another year whilst he got his feet back on?
Forgive me for interrupting you. I'm just conscious, I'm sorry I interrupted you. I think Mr. Naby's response to that would be, well, what curtails the likely period of occupation are the terms of the offer you've made us, the terms of the, of the, how you say you're going to perform your housing duties, because you're going to give him one offer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That, that, I mean, I put this case very badly, I would be able to give you. But that's what makes this not a long-term prospect, is because of what you said.
What it doesn't say is when he's going to get that one offer. It doesn't say anything about timing.
I mean, it's a follow-on point, is that I worry when you say you haven't considered this.
Whether he could reside in this.
Could reasonably be, whether it would be reasonable for him to continue to occupy on a relatively long-term basis.
What I meant, sorry.
If that hasn't been considered, it looks as though something that matters hasn't been considered.
No, I, forgive me, I put that wrongly then. If he had been living in that accommodation and had presented to the local authority saying, I am homeless. I'm living in this HMO, I've got support there to deal with my drug addiction. They're happy for me to stay there as long as it takes, but I'm homeless. Would the local authority be bound to say, yes, you're homeless? We haven't directed our minds to that because that situation hasn't arisen.
Yes, I understood, when you said we haven't considered it, I didn't understand you'd say the council hadn't considered it. You meant as it were the lawyers hadn't considered it, because on the facts that's happened in this case, the authority did accept him as homeless. All this happened at a time after the homelessness duty had been accepted.
Yes. So he was homeless from the previous accommodation with the Cyrenians?
Cyrenians. Okay, clearly there are different ways of pronouncing them, but I've always come with Cyrenians, doesn't matter.
I think we're sharing our age, but we do that for a long time, isn't it?
I think Cyrene. So, yes, he was homeless from there.
But still homeless.
Still homeless at this point, yes. But what I meant was, if he'd applied as homeless from saying, I want to move out of here, help me as a homeless person, what the local authority would then have to consider would be whether he could live there on a long-term basis for as long as he would need to unless the local authority intervened. And it might at that point be, at that point, he would be coming to the local authority rather than having had that accommodation arranged for him. So it would be a question of, was it reasonable for him to continue to occupy it, looking at all the circumstances, looking at how he's getting on there, rather than having been evicted because of his bad behaviour? So it's a hypothetical that hasn't arisen.
Right, where are we going now?
I'm just going to look through my notes again, if you forgive me. So what I wanted to come back to a little bit is Awaes Ali and the symmetry point again. I can get the right pin number. So the first proposition that we derived from our work when we came to make submissions to the House of Lords in Awaes was that there should be symmetry between the test of suitability as to whether he should stay in a property in terms of reasonable to continue to occupy and the test of suitability for being provided with accommodation. And when assessing either of those, the time which the applicant is expected to stay there is relevant. It is a difficult question of how long somebody's going to be expected to stay somewhere where you don't know how long it's going to take before the right property comes up. It's very rare that you can make a clear decision on that. So a local authority has to make a a decision on the best available evidence at the time someone applies. And that's very much going to be a question of what's available on the day as well. A local authority can perform its duty, discharge its duty to a homeless person by the provision of temporary accommodation, not just permanent accommodation. Even if such temporary accommodation is a staging post towards the provision of permanent accommodation. And what Awaes was about was whether there should be a mandatory order for accommodation against Birmingham City Council for these six applicants who had been left homeless at home. They sought an order for permanent accommodation, which was not given in the outcome because Birmingham were entitled to leave them homeless at home for a certain period of time, which on the facts haven't actually expired. The staging post point is particularly acute in relation to Mr. Kyle because the staging post accommodation is what he's been given here. He's been given accommodation that's not just giving him a roof over his head, but giving him support as well to find his feet.
I've been a bit puzzled by that. That's what the judge says and I'm sure it is a fact. But the offer letter reads, and my understanding system is simply that when a one-bedroom flat came up under the, they would simply offer it to him. They wouldn't say, we will consider whether it'd be better for you to stay where you are because of all the support you've got. So really, the time factor is simply depending on the state of Coventry's lists, not dependent on how well he's doing. If he got a medical certificate the day after tomorrow saying he's made wonderful progress, he's off the drugs, there'd be no need for him to have any support. You wouldn't say, okay, here's a property we've been keeping our back on. You'd have to say, well, we had to wait till we've got one. Conversely, when you got one, you wouldn't be saying, oh, well, we're not going to give it to you because we think you'd be better staying somewhere where you have support. Isn't it a bit of a red herring then, this whole question about the support and his vulnerability?
In, well, I don't think red herring is quite the right term, but it's certainly not a key point. It is a point as to whether it was accommodation that was reasonable for him to continue to occupy because he was not just getting the roof over his head, he was getting support. It was suitable for him with his characteristics, that's what that goes down to. And in other cases where you've got people in temporary accommodation, they might have a greater degree of support, they might have a planned pathway moving them from one particular kind of accommodation to a move-on accommodation to then mainstream accommodation.
Yes, but we don't see any sign that that was a consideration in this case, so if there is, I haven't spotted it.
That's not what I'm saying in this particular case. But because it's accommodation that was reasonable for him to continue to occupy, on the facts of this case, on the facts of Mr. Kyle's case, the support is part of the analysis. But what does the applicant say about why it wasn't reasonable for him to continue to occupy it? I haven't heard any argument that it wasn't suitable for him, that it wasn't, that it was the wrong location, or that it wasn't affordable. There's no suggestion that it was accommodation that, the only suggestions to why it wasn't reasonable for him to continue to occupy was because the landlord, the provider, had it in for him and was taken against him because of the previous incidents. The smoking and the fact that he couldn't have overnight visitors. And I think it is just overnight visitors, not someone popping in for a cup of tea. Didn't feature in the submissions, it wasn't something that the appellant ever complained about. Looking at all the records that you've got in the bundle, there's no suggestion that he felt aggrieved by that or felt that he could not live there because of any issues.
No, but the question of law, that may be relevant to the alternative way the case is put. But the primary way the case is put is simply as a matter of law. The nature of the tenancy effectively, or later on, the nature of the licence and in the light of the letter saying effectively, we're looking for somewhere really suitable for you, meant that it wasn't reasonable for him to continue to occupy.
And if that were right, then Hodge and Ahmed would both be wrongly decided. So if we can look at those.
I mean, there are different aspects, you've got a lack of security of tenure because you have the licence or whatever rather than a tenancy. Assuming that doesn't itself matter.
So I suppose the focus would have to be on the term, that the the length of the period for which the person would be there, and then that might have two aspects. A, how long he might wish to be there, B, how long he could insist on being there.
Well, he could have been there, um, had he not, uh, done what he did for an indefinite period. Until he was offered permanent accommodation.
You were going to take us to, what? You were going to take us to Hodge and Ahmed.
Well, in Hodge, you've got paragraph seventy-three. Seventy-seven, seventy-eight.
Yes, we've looked at those. What's the particular point you're getting from them?
You're going to tell us why if one of your mates, if someone of mine's mate was right, how you'd be wrongly decided?
Well, the question is established by this case, the question is whether the room was accommodation is not in dispute in this case. The question of whether it's reasonable to continue to occupy the room was a question for the council to decide. The question of whether it's reasonable to continue to occupy the room is a question of fact in each case. And it's, um, not necessary for it to be any particular tenure, not necessary for it to be any particular quality other than being accommodation which is reasonable for this person to continue to occupy in these circumstances.
And I suppose what you might say, although I'm not sure that Mr Nabi's point was really argued, but just if you look at the facts, you might say, well, if Nabi's right about this case, then the same argument could and should successfully have been run in this case because when you look at the facts, the appellant was occupying a room on the basis of a licence. And it was described as temporary supported accommodation for the single homeless. Maximum length of stay would depend on the licensee's need, so that the facts are very similar and if Mr Nabi is right here, then albeit perhaps that the argument wasn't run, you might think that the argument could have been run successfully in Hodge.
There's no material difference between, um, the accommodation provided in Hodge and the accommodation provided in this case, it seems to me. It was, in fact, a less substantial, if you like, accommodation in Hodge. It was a room in a hostel. Whereas here you've got a individual room in an HMO.
Was it just an HMO? Where's all the support coming from if it's an HMO rather than a hostel?
Um, you've got someone, I think, on, I don't know exactly.
Yes, so there's an external provider who provided drug support to Mr Kyle whilst he was in occupation at that property.
So you've come round to the property. My lord, somebody would be coming from an external provider to come and visit him at the property.
That could happen wherever he was, unless he was sent to another part of the country, but I mean, an external provider who can visit one part of Coventry, an HMO can visit him in an ordinary flat presumably. So the support, it's another reason why the support isn't really bad.
Yes, I accept that, yes.
I mean, just perceiving my thought from one note, if you go and say it's paragraph fifty-five.
In Hodge.
In Hodge, paragraphs fifty-four, fifty-five. It's said to be a licence providing temporary accommodation while residents look for more permanent accommodation. Porch light helps people to find but cannot guarantee access to permanent housing.
Mr Kyle in this case had been in this accommodation for quite some time, was indeed somewhere where he would have been carrying on living, had he not, um, robbed his neighbours. He would have been able to, um, live in this property until the local authority provided him with alternative accommodation. That alternative accommodation might have been in further temporary accommodation lawfully. But it was Coventry's intention that he would be given an offer of alternative accommodation, which would be permanent accommodation. It is not an unusual aspect of accommodation to be expected to abide by house rules, whether those be no pets, no smoking, paying the rent, whatever the rules may be. And nor should it be considered that an applicant can behave badly with impunity because there are such laws applicable to the accommodation. This was accommodation that was being provided to him as a result of the main housing duty having been accepted. At some point, that could have been considered as being a kind of accommodation that attracted the protection of Protection from Eviction Act. After the case of Enn and Lewisham, there was the case of, um, Dr Knoll and Decorum, which is, I think, cited in the judgment of His Honour Judge Gregory, where somebody had sort of settled into their accommodation and it was provided in performance of the main housing duty, even if temporary, she was entitled to protection from eviction. It's all a question of fact in each particular case. Now, in this case, the only reason the applicant argued that it wasn't reasonable for him to continue to occupy was because of the landlord having it in for him. He argued, he submitted that this was accommodation that was stable, in fact, that it was accommodation that he would be likely to carry on occupying for a substantial period of time. The local authority considered in the decision letter whether it would be reasonable for him to continue to occupy the property. It wasn't considered on the same basis as is now advanced, but that's not surprising as it wasn't advanced to the reviewing officer. It wasn't in my submission something that was an obvious thing to consider because it's only in very limited cases that accommodation that is provided by somebody in these circumstances cannot be considered reasonable to continue to occupy. These were, it was common ground that Mr Kyle wanted to carry on living there, could have carried on living there had it not been for his behaviour, and that it was accommodation that was suitable for him in all of the respects. Um, paragraph four in the decision letter, which is on page, well, I'll go to the supplementary bundle at page seventy-one. Then the core bundle at eighty-five. So it's paragraph four on the page eighty-eight in the core bundle. With regards to the property not being reasonable for you to occupy, I've been provided with no evidence why it wasn't. No evidence that the landlord wasn't as biased towards you and, um, that in my submission was all that needed to be said. Nothing in Awaes says that accommodation which is provided on a temporary basis cannot be considered reasonable to continue to occupy. Nothing in Awaes says that anything that's provided on an emergency basis can be considered not reasonable to continue to occupy. It is so frequently the case, of course, that people only approach a local authority because it's an emergency, because they've been kicked out of where they were before, because they've fleeing domestic violence, because they're fleeing other violence, or because things have just come to a head. So the local authority provides immediate accommodation to someone, but then carries on providing accommodation to them still arising out of that emergency. So the fact that an emergency gave rise to it is not an unusual circumstance.
Yes. Sure, and I noticed the time. Have you anything more you need to say, or are you nearly there?
Uh, I think I'm nearly there. May I just turn my back for a second? So I just want to come back to the terms of the statute. It's one nine three six B. It comes intentionally from accommodation made available for this occupation. It doesn't say accommodation, that it would have been reasonable for you to continue to occupy, or suitable accommodation.
No, but it does say that because that's part of the definition of intentionally homeless in one nine one.
And then reasonable to continue to occupy in those circumstances is for the period for standing at the threshold of the date when you look at it, when the intentional deed happened, was it had been reasonable for you to continue to occupy it for a period from that date onwards? And nothing in Awaes says different.
Thank you. Mr Nabi, is there any you would say?
Just some very, very brief points. Firstly, on section one nine three subsection three, our submission is that intentionally in that subsection must refer back to section one nine one. And you can't have, as Miss Rowan suggests, the accommodation that can both be reasonable to continue to occupy and not reasonable to continue to occupy. But there's no warrant for that in either the statute or in any decided case or.
If you take out the time element.
If you take out the time element.
Paragraph forty-two.
Yes.
Ali says that that is possible, but on different timescales.
Your own cases.
Yes.
Not reasonable for it to, by a full, long term, yeah, no long term, but not unreasonable to expect it to be occupied for a short. So, my lord, that is right, but I.
But in any particular case, it will be one or the other.
In any particular case, but also, and I say this respectfully, it may be that there's a slight looseness of language there in that when, uh, Lady Hale is talking about reasonable to continue to occupy for a short period, what she's really referring to there is suitability, that it's suitable because it's reasonable to continue to occupy for a short period. And if it's not reasonable to continue to occupy in the mid to long-term period, you're in the area of one seven five three, if it's reasonable to continue to occupy for a short period, there she's, I would suspect, she's really meaning section two oh six.
Can I just try to understand your case on this?
Yeah.
It's right, isn't it, that the mere fact it's a licence, not a lease, that doesn't mean that it isn't reasonable to continue to occupy?
That's right.
And we're leaving on one side for the moment questions of smoking and guests because your primary submission is, this just was not capable of being accommodation that was reasonable to continue to occupy.
It wasn't meant as its home. So the rule, so it's, my lord, I can see how one could pick off each point and I think we have, I would submit, you have to look at it in its totality and everything taken together. And that's why it's relevant that it's not protected. It's not determinative and it's not decisive, I accept that. But it is relevant that it wasn't even considered to be a dwelling house.
Can someone in Mr Kyle's position ever be intentionally homeless in these circumstances?
Well, I would have to say that in these circumstances, where the, and the key point here is that the local authority could have said, when it's made its one eight four decision, we owe you the main housing duty and this accommodation would be suitable for you. And we'd find it reasonable for you to continue to occupy. In those circumstances, we would be in a different, well, what they did say, if we look at twenty-four. What they did say was that, now that we've made you, now that we've accepted the main housing duty, this accommodation you're now in will become section one nine three.
Yes.
As your accommodation is now being provided on the section one nine three, the housing duty to you will be discharged if you are evicted for unreasonable behaviour.
Yes.
So why isn't it the case that the whole housing duty owed to you is discharged as a result of your, Mr Kyle's actions? Well, because, because this presupposes what has to be proved, which is that the duty can only be discharged if the accommodation is reasonable for continued occupation, we say within the meaning of Ali.
Can I just try and bottom it out?
Yes.
So forget about this particular letter. Suppose a local authority which accepted that the main housing duty, then we accept the duty and we think in your circumstances it's appropriate to accommodate you in this halfway house.
Yes. It's suitable. They would use a word.
They think it's suitable, but that's in a way isn't the end of it because we have to ask whether it's reasonable to continue to occupy. So the local authority has said, we think it's reasonable for you to continue to occupy this halfway house.
Yes.
Would there be anything wrong with that?
In, it's something they can lawfully say in the sense that they have the power to, the virus to say.
It depends on the fact. Assume it's not challengeable on the facts.
Yes, if it's not, if it's not challengeable on the facts and there's no legal error. So, my lord, that's why I started off this morning by saying these are all the things this appeal is not about.
And I see the point, but just to be clear, that means it is not of itself fatal to reasonable continued occupation, that it is a licence, that it is for an indefinite, for a certain term, uh, or anything else. It is capable, notwithstanding, Ali, of being accommodation that it is reasonable to continue to occupy.
Yes. My lord, I accept that. But what I do say is that not this, not this case, but I can see the circumstances where this type of accommodation, where it's clearly set out, could be reasonable to continue to occupy.
One striking difference between this case and Ali's, I think I'm right, when she was evicted, Mrs Rowan was evicted from the refuge, I know that not at that stage except the housing duty.
And you've made an application.
I've made an application. Where, so the assertion that we owe the housing duty, which is made here,
Yeah.
had not been made to Mrs. The time of the eviction, does that?
What, Mrs Moran?
I'm wondering if that affects the analysis. I'm wondering if that affects the analysis.
My lord, I, if I, I may go back to, to my lordship question. Before I come back to this, because I think I have to deal with that, I think I do have to deal with that. Our case is that this accommodation is similar to the accommodation in Moran, in, in the Alan Birmingham case. And that, just as Miss Moran couldn't be intentionally homeless from ceasing to, for, for being evicted from it for fault, similarly, Mr. Kyle can't be evicted on the facts of this case. I can see hypothetical another case where there is accommodation provided under a licence, where the local authority says this is suitable for you and reasonable for you to continue to occupy. I can see in, in that type, I can see it's certainly arguable. But in, in our case, I said this case falls within the Moran halfway house where you are there whilst other accommodation is found for you.
And I, I've quite followed your emphasis on while other accommodation is found for you. Just coming back to Hodge.
Yes.
You explained earlier that the issues in Hodge were not the same as the issue that arises here. On the facts, is there any difference between this case and Hodge, really?
Well, I thought one, one difference in Hodge is that there, that, I think it was Miss Hodge, had been living in that hostel for a year. Then she leaves it and then she goes to apply as homeless and she's found to be intentionally homeless. In this case, he is provided with one eight eight one accommodation by the council, which it is unarguable, cannot be, it doesn't stop him being homeless. The only thing that changes, because the licence remains the same, the rules remain.
Yep.
Yes, you've got that point. I, I won't make, I, I won't.
The only thing that changes is that it, that they now say it's under one nine three because they've accepted, we got that.
And it.
I see that. But going back to your first stage, in Hodge, if we look at the facts, it was a licence, temporary accommodation while the residents are looking for more permanent accommodation, can't guarantee access to permanent accommodation, maximum length would depend, would depend on the licensee's needs. You would accept that it can still be thought reasonable to occupy that accommodation.
Well, may I just have a second to get to Hodge?
I think it's, the relevant bit is two four seven of the authorities' bundle.
I'm grateful. Well, my lord, I, I wouldn't necessarily accept it. I think I, I have to say, in, in Hodge, reasonable to continue to occupy is never argued. And, and that, and that's the, so it could have been argued in, in Hodge that that too was accommodation that could have been akin to the Moran accommodation and therefore was not reasonable for continued occupation.
Before I shut up, can I ask you one more question?
Yes, of course.
Going back to the bit from Awua, for example.
Yes. I wanted to address it.
I see. I mean, there are one or two similar references, but for example, the biset sixty-eight B, this is page forty-one of the bundle.
Well, that, so I, yes, and, and I, what I had looked at was at page forty of the bundle, at D. Precariousness of tenure, likely to come homeless within twenty-eight days, this does not fit very easily with implication. The person's tenure is less precarious, can be regarded as not merely a threatened homeless status. Although I think we have to say that that does not survive, Ali.
And the same with sixty-eight B?
Yes, because at this stage, one seven five three is not being looked at as accommodation in the mid to long term when one's looking at one seven five three. You're, when Awua is looking at one seven five three, that's not reasonable to stay in the accommodation for one more night.
And I really will shut up. But just to be clear, as you say, there are lots of bits in Ali about medium and long term indefinitely and so on.
Yeah.
But it isn't your case, or am I wrong, that an individual has to have a right to stay for any particular period of time?
No, it's not my case. And in fact, in Miss Moran's case, as we, as we saw, her, terms of her licence was, she could stay as long as she needed. At page, so it's page, it's paragraph twenty-nine, page fifty-eight of the authorities'. A licence agreement said you can stay there as long as you need it while you decide what to do.
But you don't. Yes.
So my lord, you'll be relieved that your questions have dealt with a lot of the points I was going to make.
Yes, I was going to say, I mean, the most important thing about replies is judges get a chance to argue, that's quite a worry then, but if there's any points other than the ones we've raised, please.
And there are not many, my lord. So firstly, Actar in Birmingham, which my learned friend referred to in her submissions. That case says that once a local authority has said that accommodation is suitable, it doesn't have to provide reasons as to why it thinks it's suitable. But it doesn't say, you don't have to say accommodation is suitable. We reject the submission that there is a symmetry between suitability and homelessness, reasonable to continue to occupy. They are two distinct concepts and they are both binary questions. Either accommodation is suitable or it's not suitable. Either accommodation is reasonable to continue to occupy or it, or it is not. They are not the same thing. Accommodation that is suitable may also be reasonable to continue to occupy. But accommodation that is suitable may also not be reasonable to continue to occupy. My lords, I don't know if there's any other point you would like me to address.
No, I think we've quizzed you enough. Well, we're grateful to council for their submissions. We were looking to give this some careful thought. Judgment will be circulated in due course in the usual way. Be circulated to council and should only be shown to anyone else on the basis identified in the Council General for Wales case. We will be grateful both for, we will need both an agreed order or if there are any points at which you can't agree, a short written submission so that we can decide on those points by the time of hand down. And we'll of course be grateful for any, to be notified of any typographical or, or other errors. One small point I, it only just occurred to me, I certainly haven't seen any summary statements across from either side. This is a one day hearing and so both sides should have done that so that we can make a summary assessment across if they aren't agreed. But.
My lord, I, I've always been told, my lord, that where one party's legally aided, that provision doesn't, doesn't provide.
I wanted to wear that, but.
Because I, I've advised my clients to do that in the past and been laughed at frankly, so.
Well, I can't think, well, if you're expecting to win, you won't just want your legal aid cross, you'll want your cross. You'll want your cross on an ordinary, inter-parties basis. Well, let's sort all this out nearer the time, but I think it would be sensible, it's unlikely and it is likely to avoid problems later on if the parties do now change summary statements of costs.
You, you are, you are legally aided.
We are.
I've had occasions to look at the rules recently. I don't think you do have to put in a statement of cost.
Well, I'm sorry, and I was also looking at the wrong person, but it, it, oh, well, if my lord is right, then I'm wrong.
I'd understood and I, I'd understood the position to be that if one is legally aided, there has to be.
Then neither side has to put it.
There, there has to be a detailed assessment of.
I don't know whether it works the other way around, but I think it works for the legally aided.
Well, what I was thinking, just rather obviously, is that if, if I was looking at the wrong party when I said it, if the legally aided party wins, they won't just want a legal aid assessment, they will want their cross against the other party.
Yes.
And if they're getting asked for a particular sum, the other party will need the opportunity to see what that sum is. Now, whether that particular rule applies, perhaps it's about changing summary statements is only part of the story.
I'll check again.
But let's say no more about it now. I just anticipate. Well, the answer is when you know, you'll, you'll have a few days when you know who's won.
I would.
And it would be sensible for the parties to try and sort something out in that time. Sorry, that's a rather cack-handed way in which I did it, but.
No, my lord, not at all.
There we are, thank you.
And my lord, you, you said that we were permitted to file one page, no more than one page on review and.
Yes, it was really the case of cramp, if I remember correctly, and any other cases on that point. So if we could just be notified what those cases were and supplied with copies electronically, we'll do. And then just short notes saying what there is established. Hopefully you'll agree.
How would, how long would you like? Close the business tomorrow?
Sooner the better, I'd have thought. Yes, if you do it, close the business tomorrow, I think that'd be, that's what we should have. Shouldn't take long.
Thank you. Thank you, my lord.
Thank you.